Good evening. We will call the meeting to order at 7:03. We ask this from five. Just a note before we get started, we are not live streaming this evening's meeting. We've decided to end the live streaming era for the Northbrook Public Library Board of Trustees meetings. The recording will be posted to the website. We want to thank Patrick for the years of live streaming and for his diligence in making sure the community had access to our resources. So he will be here for March and April.
Uh huh. Great.
As he, as we transition to events production.
Thank you, Patrick.
And do the, continue to do the recordings.
Amazing, amazing work. Jennifer, can we get a roll call, please?
Christian. Mr. Gobinger.
Nope.
Ms. Oliver.
Yeah.
Mr. Patel.
Here.
Ms. Patrick Bishop.
Sure.
Ms. Unical.
Yes.
And Ms. Yu.
Thank you.
Excellent. Moving into the consent agenda, are there any items that anyone would like to have removed from the consent agenda and moved into new business? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Someone, thanks, Dana. Seconded by, thanks, Barbara.
Mr. Gobinger.
Yes.
Ms. Oliver.
Yes.
Mr. Patel.
Yes.
Ms. Patrick Bishop.
Yes.
Ms. Unical.
Yes.
Ms. Yu.
Yeah.
Moving into public comments, any public comment from Bryce? Thanks for being here. Staff reports, Kate.
So I wanted to just mention a couple of things. One is that we are partnering with the League of Women Voters to do some candidates forums here at the library in advance of the April 1st election. So on March 16th, from 1:30 to 4:30 in the afternoon, and I'll send a follow-up email and remind everyone, they will be doing candidate forums with the Northbrook President, Northbrook Trustees, District 25 and District 28 open positions. They've invited all of the candidates from these contested elections and will be hosting it here. We're very, we're also going to be recording it, so we're very excited. I think it's really important that we provide information on local elections to our community. And I think that this is a great way to partner. And so Ariel and Erin and their team are working on partnering with them, and I'm really excited. And any trustee that's interested and wants to come, also as a Northbrook President and voter, is welcome to.
One correction.
One correction.
There's no forum for president.
There's no forum for president.
Both candidates would have had to agree. But Catherine will be here to answer questions.
The president's slow will be here.
I know. We also had stuff on the 15th that was canceled, so it's, it's evolving.
Yes.
That is good to know. Thank you.
There will be one for the all trustees.
I think Ariel probably has sent me an email that I haven't seen yet, so. Okay, so I also wanted to just mention, I had a couple trustees just ask about the federal impacts of some of the executive orders on the Northbrook Public Library. This is something that we've also gotten questions from staff on. And so I wanted to just take a minute to kind of talk about what potential impacts there might be from any federal changes. For, from a monetary standpoint, we received no direct funding from the Institute for Museum and Library Services. They do give the state of Illinois about $5 million annually. That money goes to the Illinois State Library, and then they use it to fund different programs as well as to help with funding for the system. The Secretary of State is our state librarian, of course, and of his budget, 50 million goes to libraries. Of that 5 million is federal funding. So about 10% of the money that comes, 10% of the overall library budget for the Illinois State Library comes from the federal government. Now, we, I am monitoring and just seeing kind of what is happening with executive orders. Like, there's a lot of libraries that offer passports, and we are not one of them. We've already seen that there have been massive changes there. So I'm following a number of different sources on just keeping up with changes that might happen. Right now, there is nothing concrete, but this is something that we'll continue to monitor. And I will, of course, alert the board if there is anything that seems like it will directly impact our ability to provide the materials, programs, and services to the community. As you can imagine, the reaching across Illinois library system, as well as the Illinois State Library, is also very actively engaged in finding out what impact there might be on those systems. And at this time, they are not, they are observing and concerned, but not overly worried now. We have been through challenging times in the past with budget shortcuts, shortfalls with state and federal with the library systems. And they've already identified key priorities, one of which, the, a lot of the funding that comes in goes to support delivery. So anytime you've put a book on hold, or a movie, or pick something up at another library, we circulate, I think it's about 15 million items between libraries in Illinois every year. And that is something that is paid for by the library systems, who are funded by the state library. This, however, is a top priority. So that would not, even if there were decreases, it would not be impacted. Things that might be impacted might include things like continuing education, or consulting, the Talking Book and Braille service. But there are things that have been identified as key priorities, and delivery is definitely at the top of the list. So that is all I have on that. So a lot of, I don't know, but I'm continuing to monitor. I also wanted to mention something that was in the packet unrelated to federal impacts. And that is that we had shared some potential dates for the visit to Schaumburg. I don't think either of those dates, based on some feedback we've gotten from some trustees, is going to work. I'm going to suggest that we wait and try to find a date in May after Bryce is sworn in, so that we actually can have that. So we're going to just extend it a little bit longer. So if you had marked April 1st or 9th on your calendar, you can take those off. Stay tuned from Jennifer, we have to work on getting some more dates and checking them with Schaumburg, and then getting back to people. So we will be doing that probably over the next month. And that is everything I had, but I did want to ask Anna to give us an update on some of the building issues we've been experiencing over the last month. And then she and Becky are also going to give you a click payroll update, so Anna.
Building updates. Elevator project is moving along, great. We will talk about some changers later in the meeting, but we have an inspection scheduled for next Friday, which would mean that the project will be primarily complete. So other than that week where we didn't have any elevators, I think the project's gone pretty smooth. We talked with Tom Speltz, the interim facilities manager and thermo systems and color design, about the issue with the steam boiler and why it was kind of raining on the second floor. And we, we think we have some culprits, but we've decided that we're not going to put the steam boiler into operation until we have a facilities manager on site during the day, so that they can monitor and they will actually be able to see what's happening. So we're, we're making progress with that as well. And then talking about that project, I do have a quote from Pepper Construction that we are going to proceed with, and it is working with the insurance money that we've received from the insurance company, so that's all good. Kelly and I have been working with the insurance company and the adjusters. And we're trying to coordinate some work that's going to be happening with the elevator, so that we can get all the cost efficiencies that we can to make everything work out, or have everything be as cost-effective as possible. So, but we can talk about those other issues later on. So I, I think that's it, right? I covered them all?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And then you and Becky were going to just give some payroll updates.
Yeah, I'll let Becky start.
I'll take the call. All right. Good evening, everyone. We are now in month two of using ADP as our payroll service provider. If you'll recall from way back in last month, we did mention that the implementation did not meet any of our expectations, is pretty fair to say. And we've been keeping a log of every issue, working with ADP to hold them accountable to address any issues that have arisen. We've continued to conduct testing of our direct deposits, making sure that everything in the system appears accurate. Recently, we discovered that several other mistakes were made, including that regular part-time and part-time employees were mistakenly included in a group term life benefit that they do not receive, which impacted their tax calculation on a paycheck. And then very significantly, we found out that for the month of January, IMRF employee deductions, which should come out pre-tax, came out post-tax. And so, you know, due to this litany of errors, Kate made, I think, the correct call in requesting a new implementation specialist. We did receive that request, and we are working with a new person now, and we have rectified the issues that were addressed. We are confident and signs are looking very promising that this person will be able to meet our needs. And we continue, Anna continues to do.
We.
We, processing payrolls, paying people accurately. And we look forward to giving staff more training in ADP. Did I leave anything out?
I think you did fine. Any questions for Anna or Becky?
It's so funny.
Very much so.
Yes.
I am still working with some of the people, several grades above implementation specialists, because I do feel that this was not just small errors, but that this deserves renumeration. And so I am being pleasantly persistent and making sure that we are either given an extension at no cost, or the implementation feedback.
Good.
Yeah.
Moving into board member reports.
Well, I, I came to the Friends of the Friends of Library book sale, and this room was jammed to the gills with many books, and many people looking for books, and looked like they were doing a bang-up business. So it's fun to see all that activity here, in a library, actually buying books and taking them home. It's great.
Acquiring minds want to know, did you find anything good?
Not myself, I didn't, but I did enjoy watching everybody else. I like checking things out.
You have greater willpower than I do.
Ah, well, you know, that's what libraries are for.
All right, I'll go. Over several months now, I've had a bunch of personal issues with my family that have impacted my ability to give the attention that the library board deserves. And after a lot of thought and consideration, I deliver to Kate my resignation today. I've been on the board for a long, long time. I've enjoyed working with the library. Kate and Anna have been very supportive the entire time. Anna's been here the entire time I've been on the board, Kate, on the other hand, hasn't.
Only gotten the 10 years, I didn't get the full 15.
Yeah, so there's a lot that's changed with the library since I started, way before all the RFID. I mean, when I first started, that wasn't even a thought, through, before the renovation of the, well, half the library, I think. But mainly the first floor when Kate started, and a bunch of other things, the collaboratory, a lot of other activities pre-COVID. And I've been very happy and, you know, enjoyed all of my time in the library. Really enjoyed, you know, seeing the library kind of grow and change. I'm still going to be living up the streets, so I'm still going to be watching and paying attention to what's going on in the library. Just, you know, won't be here as a board member. I just wanted to let everybody know. And I, you know, sorry to have to stop and step down like this.
You will be missed.
You will be very missed, yeah. I'm really sorry to see you go.
You're always welcome to come and give public comments.
Correct.
I'll even let you hold the gap.
Well, if I do, I'll try not to use a form letter.
That is, that is pretty good. And so, you know, as Jay mentioned, he, you know, formally sent his resignation to Stacy and I today. And so we'll go in, we'll talk briefly at this board meeting, but next board meeting, we'll talk about kind of what the next steps are with an appointment, and also finding a way to honor someone who has given 15 years. Should count up the number of meetings, that would be fun.
Oh, we missed a couple.
But like, to say how many meetings you've been to here, but to thank Jay for all of his many, many, many years of service and, and holding three different positions, not only president and vice president, but also treasurer. So, so he got to work even more closely with Anna.
One thing I would recommend to the board members, we haven't done it, is if you get an opportunity to go to the Library Association meeting in the summer to do it. I always thought it was fun, it's the first couple of years I was here. There is, well, it was, I think there still is a line item in the budget.
There is.
Cover that. It's definitely worthwhile to just, at least once to go to, and it's here every few years. You know, it's interesting to see, there's a lot of big names that show up to it to do presentations or to talk about their books. But just to go on to the floor and to be able to see the vendors and see what is out there for just new things and ideas as to what libraries are doing. And also the trustee training that they have available, is kind of interesting and helpful, and they cover a wide range of topics. So I would recommend that anyone who can do it, does it.
Thanks for the ALA plug, Jay.
The fun items I did when I first started.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, we're going to make you come back for one more board meeting, because there will be cake. And, yeah.
A big incentive, right?
Yes. You don't have to stay for the whole thing either, you can also just come and eat cake when we do.
But also, as a member of the public, he's welcome to stay.
I already covered that.
I know, you're right, you're right, you're right. He's always welcome. Jay, you will always be welcome, not just at the meetings, but in the library, not just as a resident, but as Jay.
I'm just not going to say hi when I'm here.
Okay, good. Good. Do you want to stay, or are you going to stay?
I would actually prefer not to.
You're going to go home. We can always use your brain, but we also understand. So, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jay.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Jay.
Hinge texts, you know where to find me.
Yeah, questions, you know, feel free to text me, Stacy.
We can meet at, well, any of the diet rooms.
He's leaving now.
Yes.
I know.
We will be back for cake at a future meeting.
Yes, I'll be back.
We will bribe people with sugar. It will work. So, so yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, Jay.
Any other board member? Please, no. I was going to mention, before we knew that was happening, I attended a Rails webinar earlier this month about social media and trustees. I will send a link to each of you, because it was excellent. And I know not everybody is chronically online, like some of us, Janet and Stacy, but it was really helpful in terms of.
Literally.
Yes.
Kind of, yeah.
Yeah. We're just doing our jobs. But it was really helpful in understanding what the responsibilities of trustees are when using social media to promote things at the libraries, or share information or receive feedback. So I will share that resource. It was presented by Julie Tavendor from Ansel Glink, who's our attorney, which might have been.
Our patron.
And a patron, she's a Northbrookian. Still don't like it. So it was excellent, highly recommend it, and I will share that resource. Okay. Moving into unfinished business.
So as the board may recall, last month, we talked about doing a process for the meeting room policy and procedure review. You may have noticed that you did not get any information from me. I did talk with Biz Lindsey Ryan, who said she is able to facilitate. I would like to ask the board that we just postponed this for a couple of months. I do not have the bandwidth right now, and this was before I knew about Jay. I, I just, I want to do this well, and I want to do this thoroughly, and I want to do it transparently. And so I'm asking if we can pause it and pause it for a couple of months, and then do the same process that we outlined, but just move it forward by a couple of months, if that would be okay.
Sure.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. And I very much look forward to doing it, and to asking for volunteers from the board. And we will do that in, like, May. So.
Should we jump to elevator modernization?
Yes, please. Bill is stuck. He, he thinks he's going to get here around 7:30. He's stuck in traffic, there's an accident on 294.
Yeah, he was coming.
That is slowing him down. So. As I alluded to earlier, we need, there are a couple of change orders related to the elevator project. One of them is the staff elevator has key locks on it, so that when the elevator specifically goes to the third floor, it can be locked and people can't get on it, so that when they come down, they'll go into the back of the house on the first floor. The key locks were removed and kind of missed in the planning stage. So they're going to reuse the key locks from the patron elevator, where they're not needed, and put them on the staff elevator. But, but there is a cost for that. And then we also, there are these valves, they're called Vicnet valves, or Victolik fittings that are leaking on the line from the elevator control room to the patron elevator. And there are 28 of them. And since the elevator is down right now, it makes sense to replace it, rather than putting it back up and, and doing it at a later time, and they're leaking. So I asked TK Elevator to give us a quote for that, and that is estimate, or it's going to be $10,738.82. Part of the issue with that is some of the valves and the fittings are behind a wall. So Pepper needs to come in and cut a hole in the wall and then fix the hole. So that's why we're going to try to tie that in with the second floor work. So I am asking if you can approve these two change orders in the amount of $15,634.82, plus whatever the cost that Pepper would charge to fix the wall.
And just to point out, one of the reasons we haven't changed the valves before is because we didn't know this was an issue until they started doing the work on the elevator. And we thought this was going to be a simple elevator project, which is also why we didn't put a contingency into the plan when we had the board approve the overall project. So, which just goes to show that when you have a 50-plus-year-old building, you should always assume that there will be contingencies. But that is probably the lesson that we learned.
Well, that was going to be, is, I was going to say, have you met construction?
Yeah, I know.
I mean, but we were, and I, I, you know, I would like to, moving forward, we do build in contingencies, because every time you open a wall, every time you do something, having just done it in my kitchen, I mean, I can, this, this is what happens. Yeah. I think if we don't use the contingency, fabulous.
Right.
But I think it would be better if we planned for that upfront.
Do they share with you the implications? Had they not found this leak, like, what would have happened over the course of another year?
I didn't ask that question, Amash. But, I mean, there's an issue, so I just said, what's the cost to fix it? So.
It's going to be good.
No.
No. More raining. Can I ask that, the estimates they've given, are we, you know, are those, I know, the word estimate is there, but are they kind of locked in?
No, these are locked in costs. So TK Elevator, the reason we chose them, if, if you remember, the reason we chose them to do the elevator project and we didn't go out to bid, is because they're part of a omnium purchasing group. So all of their pricing is, has like bid out, and, and so this is a locked-in price. The, the $10,000. And then the 43, the $15,000 price is locked in. There will be no, no additional cost related to that.
From TK Elevator.
From TK Elevator. The only additional cost would be the Pepper to come in and fix the wall.
Any other questions or feedback? Can I get a motion to approve the change orders related to the elevator modernization project in the amount of $15,634.82, plus the wall repair work that will be completed by Pepper? So moved. Thanks, Jamie.
Second.
Thanks, Barbara.
Thank you.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Patrick Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
And Ms. Yu.
And then jump back.
Mm-hmm.
Great. Moving into new business, we're going to discuss the sale of Unexpected Company.
So up on the screen, I'm sorry, Stacy.
It's fine.
Is the picture that was purchased by, actually as part of our juried art show that we used to do here. We did it for 13 years. This was the first piece ever sold by the artist. It's called Unexpected Company. Andrea Kwak is the artist. And in 2019, they, the gallery owner who manages the gallery where her work is exhibited, reached out to ask if it was possible to share, to purchase it at the time they offered it for $26,000. He came back and was very persistent over the last month and a half, asking if the board would entertain a motion, because the last time the board was, did not want to sell it. And, and I told him, I said, and he's like, when can I come back and ask you again? I said, don't come and ask until board members have changed, because there's no point. And, and so he waited five years, six years, and, and is coming back. They're now offering $50,000 for this piece, and they are also. What in the travita? It isn't. It is. Yep, thank you. This is not working. So, fun. All right. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. So this is the piece, obviously it would not have the watermark on it, that they would be donating, in addition to paying $50,000 for the other piece, they would donate this piece, which would be a high-resolution signed print, which is worth about $6,500. And, and so this is what they are offering and are asking that the board consider selling it. Any money that we, if, if the board chooses to sell it, we would put this money into the capital improvement fund that can be used for future stuff. And, and I think it's great that they're offering something in comparison. This, did I already say, this was the first piece she ever sold? So that was kind of cool. It was purchased for $2,000 by, with, with money from the Friends that they.
The other one was.
This one, sorry. This one was purchased for $2,000. And, and one of the things is reaching out to Sotheby's and Christie's again. They were like, yeah, still, no, like, you should accept the offer, is what they said. It is ultimately, though, up to the board whether or not you would like to sell it. And I, I've talked to Stacy. I, I would recommend that we sell it. It is, I think, a gorgeous piece, and it's also very sizable. And I also think that as it continues to gain in price, there's also additional ramifications for us from a insuring, and, you know, do we need to do cleaning? And, and we are not an art museum, we are a library, and we like having pieces of fine art. And that isn't really our main purpose. And so, so that is all of the information. I'm happy to answer questions. Richard D'Amato, who is, you know, the gallery owner and who manages her work, is, had to have surgery today. He was going to try and join, but he was unable to join, because his doctor told him, no, that there's no way. So, so I, he's not here to answer any questions that you might have, but I'm happy, I can try and answer.
Did you switch to the, and they're going to give us this in replacement? Is this?
Plus the $50,000.
Right.
A print of this.
A print of this, a high-resolution print that is signed, and is, hang on. A high-quality signed, deep archival, matted framed print worth $6,500.
And he, in my part, he's covering the cost of freight and removal?
100% of everything, yes.
Did you speak with the Friends about this, since they originally purchased it, or they?
I did not speak with them this time round. We did back in 2019, and they were. They were not in favor of selling at the time. And I guess my feeling is that, yes, the Friends did give us the money to purchase it, but the money was given to the library, who then actually was the purchaser.
Oh, I, I agree.
And so I did not, no, I did not this time. I, yeah, I did not.
Do they share some rationale back in 2019, why they chose to?
They were much more of a mindset of, we should keep everything that the Friends have spent money on at that point. That was the Friends board's kind of rationale then. That they felt that like, if they donated it, it should be kept kind of in perpetuity. Which is fair, that was their view at the time.
But nothing is forever.
No. That is also true.
If someone pick out.
Yes, so how the juried art show worked was, and, and I'm actually going to make Anna talk about this a little bit, because it's been a long time since we've had it. At least, I, I'm the one who stopped the juried art show, because we were running out of space on our walls. So we had a graphic art. Can you try and like quickly summarize the juried art show stuff?
My, my personal thoughts, because I wasn't here when it all started. But the board at the time liked doing fundraising efforts. So the juried art show started as an event where they would do a silent auction, and they had meals, and they had this art show, and they would bring in, you know, they'd have people submit artwork, and then they had judges. And then as the board changed, the event. And then as the board changed, the event started to change. It stopped being a fundraiser as much as it was just an event. We still had the people submit artwork, we would hire uh, judges. But it, but then it just be, and then there was an opening night and the artwork was here. And and the first, second, the first prize was bought by the friends and it was donated to the library. And then the second and third prizes just received an award and uh, everybody got like a plaque. Not a plaque, they actually won um, a a financial prize for being one, two and three. But I I do think it was more started because the board liked to do that kind of stuff. And then as the board changes, but and as the board changed, the work became more of the staff rather than the board. And it was taking us away from doing what we needed to do to run the library. And Kate saw that and was like, okay, we we need to focus on the library, not on this art show. And it and it did take a lot of work.
It did take a tremendous. And and the board, so the 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 jurors that chose the pieces, the pieces would then be presented to the board. The board would have the authority to say whether they accepted them or not. One of the last, one of, well, one of the last pieces was one that I ha- have found deeply problematic. It was someone who used um, who did found art and she would find used Band-Aids and would turn them into um, uh, two dimensional and three dimensional artwork. And so I, and 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 it wasn't like encased and I was, I'm like, I'm deeply uncomfortable with hanging this on the wall where kids and people are gonna, um, so that was kind of, for me, the la, like, we were moving in that direction and that was kind of what did it. So this was one of the first pieces, this was one of the first, it wasn't the original show, but it was one of the earlier shows. I think it was maybe the second or third year that we did the show, so. So I don't know if that gives you a sense of action.
Do you need a motion?
We, we, we do, we would need, yeah, yeah.
Oh, wait on it.
Oh, I got one last question.
Yeah.
Is the?
You don't have any used Band-Aid on it right now, but that is in MoMA, you're interested.
Is the interested party um, the artist, um, is he a Northbrook resident?
No, he is, um, so one, the artist, an interesting twist. So Richard is not the artist, Andrea Quoc, um, but she and Richard, I guess, got married a couple of years ago. So he um, manages her gallery, but also now is her husband. Would he was trying to purchase this for her as a surprise for her birthday?
Well, we could have ruined it because she could be watching the recording.
Her birthday was in January. So we didn't get it, we didn't have, we didn't get it on the agenda in time.
Correct.
I, I, I was tasked with making one small statement on behalf of my son, who is an art gallery director.
Yes.
And was a very active library participant growing up, was on the teen advisory board and um, besties with summer and all that. I had him read this third item because he's an art gallery.
Yeah.
And his one comment was, well, I just want you to know that I remember all the art that was up on the walls in the library and it made a real difference when I used to come as a kid and I remember it very well. So I hope the library will keep having some art up.
Oh, a hundred percent.
He's twenty seven now, but he wanted me to.
Yeah.
I said, you know what, I will, as a former patron and a former member of the teen advisory board, it's a more reading volunteer. I will mention this to the board.
I a hundred percent agree with that statement.
And as the art director, the director of Mungerston Gallery.
If there's nothing else, can I get a motion to sell the Andrea, I always thought it was Couch?
Oh, oh, is it? Maybe.
K O W C. Um, can I get a motion to sell the Andrea Couch painting Unexpected Company for fifty thousand dollars and receive a high quality signed, deep archival matted, sixty five hundred dollar framed print of this painting at no cost to the Northbrook Public Library?
So moved.
Thanks, Janet.
Well, seconded.
Thanks, Navas.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Ms. Patrick Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Great, and we are going to jump backwards in time to the facilities management RFP recommendation and presentation.
So I'd like to introduce Bill Matt from ABM.
Do you want to come over here or would you prefer to stand?
That's you. Yeah, hi, how are you? I apologize for my tardiness. I moonlight as a high school basketball referee. And then I caught some traffic on my way up there, so I apologize. But I'm a little bit about me and the company that I'm coming from. My name is Bill Matt. I work in business development for ABM. We're we're nationwide, billion dollar company and we work in the facilities, operations and maintenance space. I was an operating engineer for twenty years. I've worked in several different industries, commercial real estate, mission critical. My last job working in the field, I was superintendent of operations and maintenance at McCormick Place, where I was tasked to kind of come in and implement some, some structure and and make the operation a little bit more efficient. So as you're well aware, we responded to an RFP and in reading through that, um, it's kind of a natural fit for us. So what we do is we come in and we um, we, all of our members, membership, are members of Local Three Ninety Nine, the Operating Engineers Union. And what our approach for this site would be is to come in with someone who's going to be a chief engineer caliber type of person. That person will be a seasoned facilities professional, they've worked in many buildings. They're going to have the operational approach to look at what's here, protect the investment, also try and get to extend the lifespan of the investments that you guys have made within this library. Another asset which uh, I view as a positive thing for this group is that part of the RFP, it was shared kind of the planned projects that are going to be moving forward over the upcoming years. One of the benefits of of utilizing the services of our chief engineers or any of our engineers is they they can act as owner's representative and kind of liaise and help guide the library while making decisions, preparing a capital plan, stuff like that, while also working every day to make sure we're running efficiently and we're getting the most out of our assets that we have here. To speak a little bit about what that plan is, it's implementing preventative maintenance and also reactive maintenance when there's issues to tip it to all your MEP and life fire, or life safety and fire systems. So that's going to be someone coming in, looking at what's here, establishing a plan going forward. It'll, it usually helps out a lot with budgeting because now we know when when expenses are going to be planned rather than reactive and also for the comfort of all the occupants of the library. Now, I know what I just said is an awful lot for a group of people who may not be familiar with what that entails. So if anyone has has any questions, I'd like to ask, feel free to ask.
Your comments were much shorter than the proposal.
Oh, yeah, I know, it's, yeah, yeah, no, there's, there's a lot in, there's a lot in there. It's uh, you know what, I could go on for a very long time. I actually teach for the apprenticeship program. So I'm I'm very passionate about it and we can get into the nuts and bolts of everything, but I don't want to bore anybody either.
I think I I I could see there was a change in how we were going to approach this um, issue and I I guess I wanted to hear a little bit more about that. I was, I don't know, we're bits and.
No, that, I mean, that would be more of a library thing.
Yeah.
Janet, the cost to have them come in and do the, to just stack the whole department was just too much. Like I, I I couldn't do that to the, to the library. So we were trying to think about out of the box ways to benefit from what ABM can provide to the library and their preventative maintenance structure and the knowledge that the chief engineer can go back to, to their group and help us with future projects. Um, and so that was why we decided to just hire the chief engineer. ABM can supervise our existing facility staff as well as our security staff. And it's a win-win for our existing staff because they can stay on as library staff and retain up their, the benefits that we have here that they, that, you know, that they apply for and, you know, and not be, I don't want to say forced, but be forced to go work for another company. So in all honesty, this is a win-win for everyone. It's a, you know, it's a win-win for the library because we're going to get the knowledge that we need, but then it's a win-win for our staff who are great and can do the daily work. And now we'll have somebody that can supervise them and provide them.
Yeah, and by no means do we come in and um, you know, kick down the doors and take over. We try to be a trusted advisor. It, you know, we'll be working with Anna and Kate on what we see day to day, thirty days out, sixty days out. And then, you know, one, three and five year plans about what we see.
In short, we we get a full-time person here, but they're sort of backed by.
So they will be backed by a engineering manager who will be out here in the beginning. I'd imagine the cadence is probably going to be monthly for meetings with Kate and Anna, just to let them know what's going on, what our findings are. We do have some preventative maintenance software which we can implement that can track the the lifespan of assets, what, what the performance has been and we, it can kind of show in real time as mechanical equipment is degrading. And then that person is also backed up by a senior engineering manager. So all those people that I just mentioned have worked in the field at minimum of a level of chief engineer or above. Just for reference, we do the engineering at Willis Tower, John Hancock, Water Tower Place, multiple iconic buildings downtown. And we also.
Places that aspire to be as cool as the Northbrook.
That's right, that's right. And we're we're also paired up with quite a few libraries throughout the entire country as well.
Back to what Anna commented about, I love the fact that you're trying to preserve the staff um, that's here. You talked about apprenticeship, but is there um, sort of a good methodology to train them and um, in a lot of the disciplines as well?
Yeah, so.
Formally, so that you want them to be prepared.
Correct, yeah. And I would say there'll be a large amount of on the job training for those people being as that they'll be working with someone who's well seasoned and well versed in this. But um, you know, one of the things that we tend to see a lot is, you know, staff always starts asking questions. Oh, I never knew how that worked or how that, we also have, um, it's available to our employees. However, it's a situation where it is, we can share it. It's something called ABM University and it's nine hundred hours of technical training that's available to people and it can be done from a computer. So when the chief engineer comes in and makes a baseline assess, assessment of everything that's here, they can take that equipment, enter it into a system and then we can generate uh, learning modules based on what's here. So we could make that available to the other personnel. As much as, as much interest as they have and desire they have to learn, we have the collateral to make that happen. In addition to what they'll be getting while working side by side with someone who's been in the business for a long time. And that person will will at least have an associate's degree from Triton College in uh, stationary engineering, so.
And and Dan does work for ABM and is a chief building engineer at a building in Elk Row Village.
I'm in Rosemont now.
Oh, in Rosemont, sorry. And so he has everything that ABM has behind him, helping him. And and he just got a new job in Rosemont, so, you know, learning all the equipment and putting it all into the system. I I mean, you can talk to that, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. The um, well, one of the things I think that that ABM will bring is is uh, some structure. We have a great staff here. E- everybody's good, their hearts in this place, it really is. And thi- this is going to help everyone and I I really feel that. I've, I've worked for ABM in and out almost twenty years. I'm I'm with them again now and uh, it's a great company and I I stand behind them a hundred percent. I think it's a, a smart move and it's it's going to help everyone.
Just a quick question in terms of communication. Will there, will there be um, someone who Anna and Kate or whomever um, can automatically communicate with, could there be a question or an issue?
Yeah, so day to day, that person would be the chief engineer. However, it, let's just say there's an issue that's bigger or a question or something, looking ahead that would require a little bit more of a group uh, group input. Like I said, they're backed up by a engineering manager and also a senior regional engineering manager as well.
We just need our own person, a person who.
Well, there will be somebody here every day.
Forty hours a week.
Forty hours a week, yes. There will be somebody here that, but if there's a problem, you know, with that person or something bigger than that person, they have, they have additional support behind that person.
Yeah.
And just from a communication standpoint, because that was something that I was really like, that to me is like one of the most important things. And in keeping the building standing, obviously. But one of the things when I was talking with all of the references, um, that everyone repeated unprompted before I got into that question was, they are very meticulous in documenting everything and providing written reports and providing stuff. And and we've certainly seen that with Dan um, here over, you know, the last six months. And Dan has also shared some of like the other reports, it would be possible if we have someone here. And and just that level of information from, in terms of creating that kind of um, record in the system of, oh, this is what was done on this at this time and this is what, and that everything would be documented. So, you know, heaven forbid something happened and someone else could come in and know exactly what was done on everything. And it's, and especially as our building is, I mean, you know, showing. Maturing, thank you, thank you. Maturing. It's, 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 that's going to become, and we've seen that even more important. You know, like the elevator modernization to me is such a perfect example of this. Is like, oh, yeah, the, how do you say it again?
Victolik?
Thank you, yeah. Right, like, oh, yeah, we did fix those, but that's something that isn't looked at in PM. But having that then documented and then you know, and like, oh, well, yeah, those were just replaced. And just all of that documentation is something that we're.
And that's, elevators are a great example, right? So when uh, monthly inspections are due by the elevator companies and everything like that, when those people come here and they know there's a chief engineer on site that can report to that person what that they were here, what they did, what their findings are, there's not any discrepancies found or anything like that. One more thing, just to parlay off of what Kate just said, is we perform four audits a year on everything that we're doing here, internal to us, right? So that's someone who doesn't work here every day. These are the engineering manager or senior engineering manager coming on site, seeing the activities, making sure everything's documented. We have the proper paper documentation and also the electronic documentation. So if an inspector walks in or an insurance company or anything like that, or anybody needs anything, it's readily available. From MSDS sheets to permits to any, you name it, we we cover it.
I also want to mention, just Janet's point, one of the things that is different is that we are, um, you know, one of the things I was a little bit nervous about was having our staff kind of report to someone, um, right, that we were bringing in. And talking with two of the references, though, that's the same model they have there. And they, um, so I was very happy to see that there was like already a system within ABM for like how they handle this. And they said, you know, like, ABM is, um, you know, will integrate into your workforce, which is what we've really seen with OSG as well over the years. And we know that that's going to take a little bit of time, that's not going to be a, and that that's something that Anna and, um, you know, in her work in in doing the onboarding would be working with, um, so that they feel like they're also part of us and don't feel like, oh, yeah, well, we're really not, I'm really not, you know, Northbrook, but they're, they are part of us as well. So I was happy to hear that that was um, a common practice that has been successful in other things. That this isn't like a weird thing that we've concocted that we're trying to shoo who can.
No, no, like I said, we come in and try and be more of a trusted advisor than anything.
Yeah, your firm sounds fully capable. And and by the way, Dan, I really enjoyed your summary from a few months back. That really helped us learn more about it.
My pleasure, my pleasure.
So when, when you run into like, like we had the chiller a while ago, the condensation, when there are some emergency situations here that require the chief engineer along with a few other people to really wrap their arms around what goes on, there's sort of a, you know, a sinusoidal wave of like, in an older building of instances. How does that work with, you have somebody that's on sort of full time on site, but sometimes it's kind of quiet. You're just doing preventative maintenance and then there's times where there's a major emergency in a building like this.
Yeah, so so one of the tasks that come along with being a chief engineer is you are expected to answer your phone twenty four seven, three sixty five. And Dan get a test too. You know, it's uh, it's, it's well laid out to anyone who would be going for the position. And, you know, at that point, they need to hear what's being told to them about the situation, assess it. And then that's a phone call to Anna and Kate saying, hey, I need to come in and take care of this or we're okay to wait till tomorrow to deal with it. Again, that, that's uh, you know, no two emergency situations are alike. However, I would expect with having someone here more, especially at forty hours a week, that those emergency situations should become less and less with greater interference in between.
They can tap into your full suite of resources, your experts in chillers, your experts in.
Yes, so we don't, so uh, that's a great point. So here in Chicago, we don't have a mechanical division that comes out physically to your site and does it. However, we have national relationships with Carrier York, all your OEM brands, so we have access to everything. Ability to procure nationwide, so you should never hear from our engineer unless it's not being made, that we can't find or get apart. We have relationships all over. We have a very great relationship with a national distributor for all OEM parts based right out in Bulling Brook called Nuko. So uh, yeah, it's, we uh, we we like to use our bandwidth as much as possible and we make that bandwidth available to you as much as we can.
Right now, Anna and I are the ones getting called out here and we're trying to explain like, I can tell the water's coming from here and I think I can shut it off here.
Yeah.
So.
And thank, you know, thankfully with. Yeah, and thank, you know, thankfully with phones, pictures, FaceTiming, everything like that, most chief engineers can just get a video of something or a picture of something, and they can make the call saying, "Hey, this is a real emergency," or "No, this can wait, and we're just gonna stop the bleeding or shut it off for the time being."
Sounds good. Any other questions? Be gone.
Thank you.
I have some questions, but they're probably, they're contractual, so that's for another day probably, or-
That is for today. That is for now.
So when you recommend some of these other companies, like, let's just say there's a problem with the HVAC system or the elevator, your company is obviously pretty deep with these relationships, like, what happens? Like, is there some preferential treatment?
Well, wait, hold on. I mean, our elevator maintenance contract, we will use Colley Elevator for elevator maintenance.
Yeah, the, the library is still able to fully contract with other third-party vendors, and, you know, like Fire Life Safety, for example, is one. What we offer there is we have relationships with a lot of companies who are locally, who if it's an ABM site will offer a discounted rate, or, you know, whether it be less of a markup on parts or whatever the case may be, that's, that's where things like that would come into play.
I mean, I think for right now, we're gonna try to keep our existing relationships, like with Effie Moran Fire Protection, with Colley Elevator, because those companies have been out here for a really long time, and they have knowledge of our systems that can help the chief building engineer learn about the existing systems. If later down the road, we see there's a cost benefit,
Sure.
then there might be a change. But I don't think, like, we're not changing all of the maintenance contracts, just because we're hiring-
But they could be sort of an advisor towards-
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, where, where, or I think you'd really see the most benefit is when the contract life cycle, life cycle comes to its end and you're going out for another RFP, the chief engineer can help write the scope. We do have several clients who ask us to kind of sit in as a review process, so we do do that as well from time to time.
I mean, they would, I would have them review the contracts, make sure that we're, I mean, and a great case in point is the HVAC. Effie, Effie Moran was our HVAC contractor, they are no longer, so we are using Thermo Systems right now. That contract is actually coming up, Dan, and I need to talk about that one, but I would have whomever the chief building engineer is sit in on those meetings and review those contracts and say, "Oh yeah, no, you, we need to get bids from somebody else," or, "Oh no, this contract is good, and this is a good price, we should stick with them." And does, does that help answer your question?
It does, it does. What I wanted to, you know, just ensure for your benefit is that as experts come in here, you need to get this taken care of, and they have these relationships, and the next thing you know, you're getting wrapped up in these-
Right. And that's one of the things that we actually won't, because we are also bound by state law, which has some pretty strict provisions over how we do maintenance work. And so, for instance, anyone that we bring in has to pay prevailing wage. That is included in all of our contracts. Anyone, any projects over 25,000, we have to go out to bid. The bid has to be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. The way that the lowest responsible bidder is defined is you have to prove that they are not a responsible bidder. And so there is not, I mean, I know that in, you know, that might not be the way every unit of local government operates as it, which is how it should operate in Illinois. But that is something that I take very seriously, Anna takes very seriously, and we know in talking with Bill that ABM does as well. So there's also that layer where there's not gonna be that scope creep of, because there can't be, because we're, we're, we're a library, and we like rules, and we're gonna follow the rules, and we don't want to go to jail, um, or break laws. Like, let's be honest, even if you weren't, we don't want to break laws, because that's just not how we roll. So I think that also provides some additional protection that if we were a for-profit or other type of business, wouldn't necessarily be there.
Makes sense.
Yeah, and we, you know, typically our role is to advise, there is a scope of work included in our contract. And like I said, in, in most scenarios, we act as an advisor to the client on what we think is good or bad, or if, you know, someone's technically disqualified for being, you know, stuff like that.
Excellent.
Which they're gonna have a much deeper knowledge of, so like, we won't have some of the issues we've maybe had, because they're gonna be like, oh, well, actually, they're not a responsible bidder, because blah, 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 the stuff that we wouldn't possibly be able to know.
Yeah, we have 1,200 sites here locally in the Chicagoland area, so we deal with a lot of, our, our staff and people like Dan deal with a lot of contractors coming in and coming out. So we hear the great things about the good ones and the bad things about the very bad ones. So if, you know, Anna always asks me for a reference of a mechanical contractor, I could give her five off the top of my head, or any, you name the service, I, I could make a recommendation. So that's, that's where we typically stand there.
Great. Thanks.
That helped?
It does.
Does that answer all the contractual stuff, though?
Uh, yeah.
Oh. Okay.
Any other questions? May I ask for a motion now? You can do whatever you want. You're in charge. Well, yeah, I mean, within the bounds of the open meeting. Great, thank you, thanks. Can I get a motion to accept ABM's proposal to bring onboard a full-time chief building engineer at the cost of $200,306.28?
Twenty-eight cents?
We're really pushing things tonight. Some, thank you. Seconded by Barbara, and a roll call then.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Inspector Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unical?
Yes.
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Do you have the chief operating engineer here with you now to say?
Now we can engage in the four to six week process, but, yeah. You're welcome to stay, but yeah, you don't have to.
We're gonna fight traffic in the other direction.
Can I, can I just have a couple minutes before we start talking about the-
Thanks, guys, we'll see you guys.
Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Nice to meet everybody.
Talk about health insurance and then-
Yeah, can we just keep going out of order?
Yeah.
Sure. Um, so we're jumping to-
IPBC health insurance changes.
Health insurance, we love it.
Health insurance, everyone's favorite topic. So we are part of an insurance pool here at the library in IPBC, and they notified us recently of some very significant changes that we need the board's approval on to make move forward. They notified us that one major medical group is leaving our HMO Illinois plan. And also, more significantly, they notified us of insurance renewal increases that are historically very, very high, especially for our PPO plan of 16.4% is the projection. I talked to our HR manager who's worked here for 18 years now, and I said, "Has it ever been this high in your recollection?" She said, "No, she's not seeing an annual increase at this level." The HMO Illinois plan is a 4.3% increase, so significantly smaller. So we are here to kind of talk with you some ideas on how we can consider mitigating the, the cost of that very, very large historic increase. IPBC told us that we are able to add the Blue Advantage HMO plan. By adding the additional HMO plan, the network that left is now part of the Blue Advantage Network, that's Advocate Medical Group. And by adding that HMO plan, July 1st, it means that anyone who's enrolled in that coverage will maintain their coverage. So it's really a win-win for them, no one will lose any existing coverage. And then the other second kind of consideration is, we've been thinking very long and hard about what we can maybe do to mitigate against these 16.4% increases, and we can make some plan design changes. There's a table in the memo of some proposed changes that include raising the deductible for both individual and family coverage for PPO, raising the out-of-pocket maximum, upping the copays, and then reducing the co-insurance rates. By making these plan design changes, we can save anywhere between 2% and up to 5% off that increase. So bringing down that 16 points, 16.4 down to about 12.4, still, still a very substantial increase even with these plan design changes. But we are really thinking really hard about what we can do, because this impacts our staff directly. It also impacts the library budget directly, because every percentage, percentage increases, you know, thousands of dollars. So, I'm happy to answer questions. We do, we are in a bit of a time crunch, the deadline for us to tell IPBC about the changes is tomorrow. So we, we, we cut this, this meeting came in the, in the nick of time. So we are hoping to, to get your input.
I was curious, I, I'm aware of this, it happened where I worked.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, so, ended up doing the same thing. Are you also keeping HMOI?
Yes.
Because it, you know-
We are able to keep it and just add this other-
And you're gonna do a special enrollment?
It, it all, the, it actually lines up with our open enrollment, which is in July, so Advocate is leaving in July, and we are having our open enrollment, so coverage can be maintained like seamlessly across if we add this plan.
What is the base, I guess, what is the premium? When you say 2%, 2% what?
Sorry, which?
Um, just in general, what's the premium, what's the monthly or yearly premium that we are talking about that this 2% to 5% is gonna be based on, or the 16%?
Oh, like, if, if we make, if we get these proposed changes approved, the plan design, then we would save anywhere between 2% and 5% off the increase.
I think Jamie's looking for what the actual-
So like, I think- A single person is like a thousand dollars.
It's in the table right below that. But I think if your question's like, you said that the price was interesting up to 16.4%, but then you have this 2% to 5% of that is what-
Yes, if, if we make these plan design changes.
Which is basically moving the cost over to the staff, right? To the extent that their deductibles and copays go up and-
I'm just trying to figure out, like, on an individual basis, like, for Anna, is she better off? Or, like, it's gonna be more expensive, but like-
Correct.
Like, you know what I mean, like, so you, your premium would have gone up 16% times 1,000 versus-
16% or 12% times 1,000.
Right, versus now it's gonna be 2% to 5%, however, like, I'm trying to just, now, and, but then your deductible is $200 more, I guess, I'm, yeah.
Yeah. Because I think I know exactly what-
Are you talking about 1,000 is a month?
A thousand a month is-
It's like an average for an individual.
For an individual, not individual per house or family coverage, and that's-
Well, the employee pays 10% of that 1,000.
10%.
And then the library pays 90% for a single, for a single insurance.
Got it, got it, got it.
I mean-
Yeah. And with the proposed plan that split the 10, 90 stays the same?
Yes, so one of the things, so we're planning to bring, so we know that we need to do a deeper dive into all of the insurance stuff. We have not made any plan design changes since I have been here. As you can see from here, our deductible is signi-, it is the lowest, yes, it's the lowest in the pool. There are others that have it, I mean, but I would say only about 20% of the other units of local government in the pool have a $300 individual deductible. So we recognize that we wanted to increase it, but without hopefully harming. We did just get data back that only about 50% of our staff need that deductible, that $300 deductible a year, which to me means moving it to 500 will save money, but will not adversely impact. It's not like we're asking them to pay additional 200. We need to, and we will be in the next year, doing a deep dive. Becky very much wants to look at, like, all of the HMO stuff. I very much want us to look at adding a high deductible with an HSA, which has, as you know, massive benefits for people. We need to do education with staff on that. This timing stinks. Because what I was hoping for was that we would be able to do this deep dive, we'd be able to turn around to staff and say, "Yes, we're increasing this stuff, but we're actually saving you money." And right now, unfortunately, because of these historically high, and like, I'm gonna just say last minute, because we only got notice a few weeks ago, um, well, I should say less than a month ago, but we did not see, you know, like, we now are just trying to mitigate the pain. Sure. Right? And, and so I would say that it will impact some people, like, we also, next month, plan to bring the board some additional recommendations on how we can further mitigate. So for instance, I mean, just looking at like the four other staff people in this room who all have children and have, well, Anna's, I guess, they're not on it anymore, but they were until very recently. The family coverage, we cover with an 80/20 split, and 20%, the employee pays, no, 25/70. 25/70, I'm sorry. I always do that, I jump back to the library. We recognize that the cost for that is significantly, it's closer to, what, 3,000, 3,400 a month? Right now, for the premium? I should know this off the top of my head. It's, it's significantly higher, and so the impact for those people, which often if they have, especially if they have younger children and are newer, oh, yeah. Carol and Erin have insurance too, I'm sorry, that was so rude. I didn't mean to just like lump you guys out. Erin's with me, no kids, but everyone else. But there is, right, we know that there is, um, the impact is not uniform. And so we want to bring back some ways that we can further mitigate that, especially for people that are maybe lower on the pay scale, that this would have, you know, we know that for a family coverage that I think it was gonna cost like almost 2,000 extra a year with these increases for someone. Well, for someone making, you know, $40,000 a year, that's sizable. And so, so we, we, the plan changes, because we have to do these right now, are meant to stop the bleed, this is the tourniquet. And then next month, the plan is to do some wound care, but then really what we need to do is then to do the rehab to get us to where, I don't know why I went with the hospital metaphor there.
That's twice now, so.
I know, oh gosh, jinxing us. But we know that we need to do a deeper dive, and we, we know that the insurance stuff is a sizable percentage of the total compensation package we give to staff, and, and a sizable cost to the library, but also to staff. So how can we make it affordable for everyone? And, and making sure that people are still getting the coverage that they need in order to be able to stay healthy.
Can I ask, do, I mean, I don't need exact numbers, but in a general sense, do your employees tilt more toward the HMO or PPO?
I, I did some quick math before the meeting, and it's about an 80/20 split, 80% PPO to 20.
Wow.
So this, that's why this feels very pressing, that we do whatever we can to minimize the impact on staff.
And educate us, Becky very much wants to, about the benefits of switching to HMO.
If it's-
If it, if it makes sense.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I'm so confused about the math.
Yeah.
You're, you're saying like a thousand dollars per month in, like, 10 and 90s, so on average, like, if I'm a library employee, I pay 100 per month?
Yes, correct.
That would have been 16.4 dollars of increase?
Correct, yes.
But this is a library.
For the library, it's adding about 110,000 to the budget.
Right. And the proposed, um, helps the library got like-
It helps reduce the premium.
Premium.
And it will really help those that are on family plans.
Okay.
Which is significantly more expensive, in which they have to cover a higher percentage of.
And this is just something they gave us, like, saying, like, okay, this seems like suitable one for you, or this is like Becky and then-
They recommended that we actually go deeper, and we did not feel comfortable doing that.
Okay.
They were like, "You should just move the co-insurance to 70%," and I'm like, um, what? Like, oh my gosh, no. And they're like, "You could increase the deductible to 1,000." I'm like, "That's tripling it." That-
We, we wanted to make more incremental changes before, as Kate mentioned, we wanted to do a much deeper thorough dive of all of our options that are available to us that we realized, there are many options that we're just not aware of, and we were told this about two to three weeks ago, so we kind of needed to be able to present something to, as Kate said, stop the pain, but know that this still is, even with our mitigation, gonna be, gonna be a challenge.
After you get through this tomorrow period, will you consider like reaching out to some of the other libraries or comparing, contrasting how they handle this? These cost increases are everywhere, right?
They are everywhere, and they're across the pools, it's not just this pool. I've talked to a couple of other library pools, and they all are experiencing these double-digit between, you know, like 12 and 17% increases.
And how to handle it with their staff and-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, people right now are just mostly freaking out. Not really much helpful stuff yet, but. I'm hopeful, yeah. And I think it's one of the unfortunate things of that. You know, being in a pool absolutely benefits us. Um, but then there are times where if you have a lot and we know that there have been, there were significant things paused during COVID, I think we're starting to see. I think th- my personal take is that this is what we're seeing now is the deferred. Care that people got, and now there are much more serious issues that people are dealing with, and so there are much bigger payouts happening. And so the pools are having to mitigate those costs and the insurance companies are trying to, it it's. I also hate that we as the employer are making these decisions that are impacting individuals. Um, that also feels not super great.
Hey, hey Becky, uh, question, uh, statistically, do your um staff members? Take insurance or do they um defer it because their spouse has it for their companies? Like what percent is?
That's a great question. Um, of the full-time employees, um, I don't have the exact percentage, but there's very few who decline our insurance. So although some people do take it just for themselves and their spouse maintains coverage elsewhere, that is, that is a a thing that happens too, but um, the. It varies across, we have a lot of singles, people with dependents. And we have two.
We have two people that declined.
Two people that, yeah, that's right, two people that decline.
Full-time.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we've got about forty-five full-time staff.
And you know, it's kind of unfortunate in.
Yeah.
Private society and all these companies, what they do is they push the envelope on forcing your spouse off of the plan if they have. An option, so in the library, you're gonna have a larger pool of people um and families that are, it's just the nature of.
Yeah.
Yeah, your program. Public companies are kind of.
Would you like to come and work for us? It's a great place to work after she's done.
Because my husband also works.
Right.
Yeah, the search.
Public companies, that's what they're doing, but libraries don't do that, so.
So, yes, that makes sense. Public sector doesn't do that, we certainly don't do it.
Right.
Right.
No, and and I think one of the reasons that we have such a robust plan is that we recognize that from a. Salary perspective, we're not able to compete with the store profit, and and this provide, I mean, I would say that. When we do the total compensation packages um and and calculate those numbers, typically. It in the total compensation package for an employee is increased thirty-five to forty percent from their base salary. Because of the benefits packages we offer, and you can see that in here, and I think that that is really important, that we maintain that good coverage. But also recognizing that the these high increases impact not only the library, but the staff.
Yep.
So.
And, uh, you know, we we talk about um feedback, right, and their scoring and all of that, so. This is a sensitive topic with the ADP debacle and then this topic, you just wanna, there's a lot of FAQs, like this conversation we just had right here is. It's important for them to be aware that, you know, uh, other public companies, you can't have your spouse on a plan.
Yeah.
The library a lot, like, there's a lot of great things that they will appreciate when they really peel this back, even though there's an increase to them. So. Managing the communication.
And we always talk about the staff being. The people who are the heart and that's the priority, so from my perspective, we don't need new carpet. We need to make sure that their insurance is what they need and deserve. And I continue to say that's for me a priority.
Yep, prioritize that over many other things.
That's helpful for when we.
Yeah.
Put together some recommendations for next month, so thank you.
And you should have the um high deductible, cause we were not even meeting the.
Right, it would save them so much money.
Invest in the HSA.
Yes, well, and and there was, there was not to get too deep into this, like, next year rabbit hole, but like. One of the things when I was the Rails Board President, we looked at the insurance there and um so and and switched to adding a high deductible with an HSA. And Rails um changed it so that they were actually covering some additional costs. Because the premiums were able to decrease so much that they were able to offer that as an added incentive. So that those people that were meeting the deductible um on a really, on a low deductible, that it it still was saving that, it was still cheaper for Rails. To pay money to them to cover with the higher deductible, and it still saved Rails. Like tens of thousands of dollars, which was great. Um, anyway, sorry, that's like. That wasn't, that was not very clear, cause it requires a chart. Questions or feedback?
Yeah.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you. We get a motion to approve the addition of the Blue Cross and Blue Shield Advantage HMO and modify. The following in the PPO plan is outlined, deductible increase, out-of-pocket maximum increase, co-pays, out-of-network co-insurance change. Thanks, Jamie. Thanks, Barbara.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Inspector Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Jeanne Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
Do people want to take a break before the budget discussion or after?
I'm ready for a little break now.
Great, let's take a quick recess. It is currently eight eighteen, please be back at eight twenty.
Eight twenty. And I have never given all of ours.
I know, I know.
Okay, we are ready for our presentation.
Hello. Welcome to part two of the February board meeting. No, wait, hang on, sorry, we're. Behaving weirdly, which is fine. Oh, right, as Patrick pointed out, I have control of my computer. Thank you, Patrick. Okay, so Anna and I, oh gosh, Anna and I are going to go over the budget information that was in your packet. So we're going to share some information on things that we considered when we were putting together the budget. And then go over, and then, so I'm going to talk about considerations and then Anna is going to be going over the revenues and expenses that were outlined and shared in the board packet. So, starting with considerations, these are the things that we considered. And this is the first year, I'm very excited to say it, a long time, that we have a strategic plan. And so we have a number of strategic plan initiatives that we have outlined. These are just a sampling of some of them. Big things include the website redesign, doing some more focused programming, which is part of the programming budget that Anna will also mention. But then also working on the security cameras, alarm, door locks, and paging system. And originally, we were going to be working with Jaffe Security in year two of the strategic plan. We moved that up to this year, and the board has, of course, approved the proposal. And we've already started working with Jaffe and are doing a lot with them. And they're helping us with the security system, RFP, that we're working on. So those are kind of the really, really big projects that you will see as we go through the budget. But we will also have other projects that are woven into some other areas, like professional services, programming, materials. The staff are going to be working in the next year on a collection development policy, which then may inform changes in how we're choosing to allocate the budget for materials. We also are, as we always have been, focused on lifelong learning and staff development, continuing to train staff on EDI principles and best practices, and then doing more, as we talked about with the insurance. So those are some of our bigger strategic plan projects that we'll be working on. Other things that we thought about in putting together the budget is, of course, the costs that we don't have as much control over. Liability insurance. Anna and I have a meeting set up with our insurance broker where, so she's put in a temporary, like what we think the increase is going to be, we're going to be meeting with him next week?
Next week?
Yeah, I'm like, because today's Thursday. And so we recognize that liability insurance, especially in the realm of cyber liability, has continued to increase in costs. So we continue to meet with him to look at how we can reduce, like, make sure that we have adequate coverage while also reducing expenses in that area. We also have, of course, our largest area of our budget, which is our personnel. Personnel in most library budgets accounts for 50 to 80%. If you are also including the health insurance, we recognize that that, obviously, we were just talking about that. Anna's going to talk a little bit more when we get to the expenses, but the health insurance stuff is big. But Becky has also been working on the pay equity audit, and we'll be presenting that to the board and to the staff in the next two months. And so we also expect and have built in money into the budget for that as well. Materials are, of course, are kind of bread and butter, meat and potatoes, unless you're vegetarian. The materials portion of our budget is, of course, really important, and the serving our public recommends eight to 12%. We typically are 12 to 13%, but this is an area that we know we need to spend money on. We continue to see high costs around ebook usage. There is still potential legislation at the state level for trying to reduce ebook pricing so that it is more in line with what the average consumer is paying. We still, as I've explained to the board previously, still pay much, much higher costs, typically six to eight times the cost of what a typical user would pay, and often have additional restrictions, like you can only go out 26 times before you have to buy another copy. As we continue to see heavy usage with our downloadable items, this is a part of the budget that we need to continue allocating funds for, while also make sure we're maintaining our large and also very well-used physical collection. Programming is often, when I know when I present for new library directors, they always think programming is a huge part of the budget. The programming typically is usually only one to three percent of our budget. We spend just a little over $100,000 on programming, but we do have money specifically allocated for some of the strategic plan goals that we have set aside. We also, with the programming, are focused on making sure that we have, make programming accessible. You know, obviously, the Zoom room that we have now, but also just making sure that we have money set aside for, you know, ASL and live captioning. So that money also comes from that, and that's something that we also look at and talk with staff about to make sure we have adequate coverage. Our building is aging, and all of the items, or FFNE, furniture fixtures and equipment, also age. And with the over 1,000 people that come in every day, these things all get wear and tear. You can see right now the gray spec tables that are in this room are looking not the greatest. And so we recognize and always allocate money to make sure that we're updating furniture and equipment, making sure that our building isn't looking shabby and down, kind of down in the dumps. Technology is another thing, and this is, Kelly works very closely with OSG on reviewing our technology replacement plan. We've continued to see increases in our software costs. As more and more have moved to a subscription-based model, that means that you can't just buy a copy of Adobe Creative Cloud and load it on the computer. It'd be good for a decade. You're paying that monthly subscription. So we have seen, over the last decade, our software costs continue to increase. And as technology becomes more and more interwoven into the work that everyone does, it has gone from a nice-to-have to a need-to-have in certain areas. You know, I did just hit 10 years. Anna's going to elbow me because she says I'm talking too much tonight, which is typical, because I talk too much most of the time. But when I started, we had 118 staff, and of that, only 33 people had email addresses. So 10 years later, we have 114 staff, and 114 people have email addresses. And we're on Google, and Google has said, like, we're not going to offer it to you for free. You have to pay, and you also have to upgrade so that we can do the multi-factor authentication. So the costs are things that we continue to evaluate and look at. So now I'm going to turn things over to Anna, who's going to talk about.
No.
Okay, I'm going to continue doing this, and we're going to look at the new side of things.
So in the fall, you, the board approved a 4.6 tax levy increase based upon us looking at trends of prior years and what I think is going to happen in fiscal year 26. So this is what we're working with. So I, on this sheet is the 4% tax levy increase. I have put in an estimate for replacement taxes, fines and fees, interest income. Other income is a placeholder, same with gifts and designated income. So our total revenue is $9,131,600.
And not 28 cents, no.
Sorry, what's the difference between budget and forecast columns?
It's just what I am estimating we're going to be at. So we know that, like.
Your budget?
And this is what I'm thinking we're going to come in at by the end of April. So replacement taxes is higher than what I budgeted. Fines and fees will be, will be higher than what I budgeted. Interest income will be higher than what I budgeted. And fines and fees and interest income, I always try to keep conservative because I don't want to have that number be too high and then not receive that much. And then what are we going to do if I'm expecting it? So.
Where do we get most of the interest from? Like, it's just like what we put in the bank?
Yes, through Fifth Third, and Fifth Third is where we get most of it from.
It's some really good rates on CDs.
Yes. So. And so we do this for all of the funds, the operating fund, the FICA and IMRF fund, the debt service fund, which is, we have a debt, we have the debt schedule, and it tells us what we will be paying in principal and interest. So that number is fixed. And then the capital improvement fund, we do not levy for this fund. So the money is typically interest income. And then we will, we transfer funds from the general fund just to make sure that we're always trying to put something in there for future projects and for expenses, like the elevator project, like. The second, well, the second floor repair will be covered by insurance, but you know, that, you know, those types of. So. This is just the total of what we levied. We levied $10,609,700. And then the CIF interest and the operating fund transfer, the transfer from the operating.
I realize I, I originally, last year I did the slide, and I thought it was confusing. The $445,000 comes from the $9 million plus income. So it's not a separate.
Yeah, it's, it's not.
Right, again, just a reminder, yeah, like, I should maybe do it as a subset, I don't know. But just so you know that that, the 455 is represented in two places. It's represented in the $9 million, and it's represented, so you know that's the money we're putting into the capital fund.
So now the expenses. As Kate mentioned, personnel is over 50% of our budget, and this is just salaries and wages. It's, it's nothing else for the 114 staff. This is our biggest, this is our biggest line.
And there's some shifts now with the facilities.
Oh, yeah.
So Anna shifted. We weren't sure what was going to happen tonight, but she did shift money from facilities.
That'll be, you'll see the shift next month.
Yeah, you're right. Yeah, I'm sorry. Okay.
As Becky talked about, group insurance is going to go up, so this line went up significantly in the budget that I put together. Unemployment, we'll get finalized numbers next meet week when we meet with the insurance broker. Or no, I'm sorry, workers' comp. Unemployment, we're self-insured, and those numbers kind of remain constant. And then staff development, like we said, we like to make sure that staff have lifelong learning. So we'll send them to conferences, and I believe next year is the PLA conference, which happens every year in the spring, in March, every other year, sorry.
Yeah, so you see a little bump up every other year, so.
Yeah. Commodities, we have materials, which Kate talked about. We'd like to have it be 12 to 13% of the budget. Programs, we, for fiscal year 26, we will have One Book, One Northbrook in it. So there is an increase for that, as well as for the strategic plan initiatives. Office library supplies, sophomore, software, we, we always see an increase. Postage kind of stays consistent. Community relations and janitorial supplies will stay consistent to prior years.
I didn't do a good job. I was supposed to.
It's all good. Contractual services, OCLC. That should say CCS, not ILO. With the number of libraries that are joining the consortium, these expenses are coming down, but I think we kept it consistent year over year. Photocopy, we have decided, OSGD, Kelly and I have decided to keep the existing copy machine, so we're not going to lease, so this cost came down. General insurance, we'll be meeting with the insurance broker, so that number might change next month. Telephone and internet will, has remained consistent, but there will be changes in the future because of our internet providers. Professional services, this is where we will be putting the facilities management agreement, so where you'll see the switch between salaries and wages in this account. That will happen next month. Equipment rental and maintenance is a cost that we pay for, like, the maintenance of the self-check machines and postage machine, and this number remains pretty consistent. We have an aging vehicle, so we do put some funds in here just for repairs. Utilities, it stayed consistent. Building repairs either comes out of this account or CIF, depending upon where.
The level.
Yeah, where, what the level is. Contracted services is like HVAC, fire inspection, janitorial expenses. And we'll put, like, a small increase on all of these contracts because, you know, they'll go up 3% to 5% year over year. And then recruiting, if there are any costs related to postings or whatnot.
We have a very small.
Yes, small budget for that. As Kate said, we have an aging building, but we do need, you know, and so we need to buy furniture to kind of upkeep. And this is also where we have our technology, when we need to make technology improvements. Every year, we apply for a per capita grant, and those funds are always applied to the technology piece of our furniture and equipment lines, so that helps with that line.
I just want to really quickly add for per capita. I should have mentioned this when I was talking about the federal stuff. The per capita grant is something that is enshrined in statute at the state level. That is not federal money. That money comes to us and is something that is appropriated by the state legislature, not federally.
And then contingency is just a placeholder and board development. If you guys want to attend ALA, this is where those funds will come from.
Someone mentioned that.
Yeah. And then designated expenses, you will see, has decreased year over year. And this is mostly because ILP, Illinois Library Presents, is going to be, all of the financial transactions are going to be handled by ILA starting next fiscal year, and we will not be doing that at the Northbrook Public Library. And it's been great to do it because it's a great program, and I was really happy to help, help them take care of that. But it's time.
Transition it.
It's time to transition it to someone new. And then the debt service transfer is because we don't always collect 100% of our property taxes, so we want to make sure that that fund is always flush, so we will transfer whatever they're missing. And then CIF, we just want to make sure that we can cover expenses as they come up and in the future. So, as I said, personnel is over 50% of the budget, fringe benefits is 11%, commodities 16%, contractual services 13%. And then a little bit for capital outlay, other designated, and then the transfer. Do you guys have any questions? I mean, there will be changes next month just because of what we've, what happened today, yeah.
I know you always do a lovely job with our budget, and we're always in really good shape. Do you have any concern about the current situation with inflation and the unpredictability over the next year?
I don't know. I mean, we're, well, I mean, we will make it work, like, you know, we will, we will make it work.
Can always move things around.
Yes, we can always move things around.
Yeah, I think having the fiscal policy that the board adopted, like, five or six years ago, that stipulates that we will keep anywhere from six to 12 months in the fund balance, and that we have been very focused, you know, over the last, I would say, eight or, you know, eight or so years in putting more money into the capital improvement fund as we knew that there were building projects. You know, when Anna started taking over the building stuff, we started being a lot more thoughtful and dedicated with that. And so I would say that that also has, it's not just a help in the short term. It also is helping set us up for the long term. So, and I don't think Anna's brain even knows that she's, like, doing that. I think it just does it automatically. But she's always looking at, like, the now and the future. We're also very fortunate, especially with some of our banks, who are very proactive in telling us, like, oh, hey, there's going to be a really great rate on the CD. You want to maybe put a little extra in, or, oh, we're expecting this to happen. So, you know, we get, that's one of the benefits of banking local, is that we have those relationships, and I think that they're really good about keeping us in the loop about those things and about warning us of, like, hey. So. Yeah. Which, I guess, if that would ever be of interest, we'd be happy to bring them in if you ever were interested in getting a more in-depth look at kind of that from any of the bankers. We would love to come and talk with you guys. You guys are so fun.
I had a question, and maybe you ran over it, and I just saw kind of a word. But under, undesigned revenue, under other income, I noticed that the budget was for $100,000, but it looks like you're forecasting, not even, $10,000. So then.
It's a placeholder, Janet. I mean, it's in case something happens. Let's say we got, like, a huge donation from somewhere. That, it's, it's just a placeholder. And it's offset by other expenses on the other line, so it's in and it's out. It's the same number. And if you look at the expense side, it's less than the income that's brought in.
As a village library, if we were a district library, we would have to do a separate appropriation ordinance. But as a village library, we don't do that. So there are, our annual budget essentially serves as our appropriation ordinance that we then send to the village that is then used kind of in lieu of that.
Yep.
If that helps at all, too. So this is also a way of making sure that we'd be able to spend the money if we got it, but not actually expecting it. So it's a little bit of a wish. But, and there are some years when we do get it, and then others.
I could see that from looking back over.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, I'm aware of that.
Does that help? Maybe we should.
Well, I used to be on the other side of that, don't you, Gaby, so?
Yeah, right. Right, yeah, you're right, you're right, yeah.
Think I remember that from my orientation.
Look at that, it's stuck. This is great.
Any other questions, information you'd like Anna to bring back next month when we officially approve this?
Yeah, we will have to approve this next month.
I don't go to the portal enough. Is this available, the, for the Excel spreadsheet? Okay.
The Excel spreadsheet, and actually details, spreadsheets of all the lines, like, and what goes in it is all in the portal. I think there might be a couple that I haven't put in there yet, or Jennifer hasn't put in there yet, helping me. But I do still have a couple of spreadsheets, but most of them are in there.
And Anna and I are always happy. I know that this is a lot of information. If there's ever, if anyone would ever like to sit down and go for any of this, we're happy to do that. Yeah. Who doesn't love talking about spreadsheets?
I know it's a lot, as always.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, where we are. Quarterly strategic plan report, and executive director quarterly gold check-in. We'll let Kate get back to her seat.
So I, I mentioned to Stacy, when we were in our check-in meeting before the board meeting, that I was actually really surprised because it feels like there have been so many emergencies that we hadn't actually gotten anything done. So then I made my surprise when I was pulling all the notes from me and all of the staff together, that we have actually gotten quite a bit done. Computer's behaving badly.
No, it's just making noise.
It is?
What's the thing from so on?
Okay, okay, great. I love that. So I would say, so I think that we have made some really great progress. We continue to work on the data dashboard with Mallory Edgar from Fifth Star Collective, and I look forward to, in probably April, sharing that with the board, so we'll have more easy access to looking at the data of what we're collecting. We're continuing to, and of course, we've completed the succession plan. As I mentioned, with some of the other stuff, we have the website review. So Linda and I have been working on the project planning. We're going to be putting together a staff committee, and we'll be presenting more information on that to the board likely in May, but are continuing to move forward with that and have a good project plan for that. One thing that we have not been able to get back up is the master plan revision. The plan was, we were pausing it because of the ADP stuff. We were going to restart it in January. You may recall, January had some fun, unexpected building things happen. And Anna and I need to revisit the timeline for that. We know that this is. We know that this is desperately needed and so incredibly important, and it is something that we want to do well. We don't want to do slapdash. So this is something that I am asking the board that we, this is on my goals and is also one of the strategic plan goals, that we shift this into the next fiscal year because I just don't see how it, there aren't enough hours in the day. And, and so certainly if the board feels that this should be a priority, there are other things we can pause. And this is something that we just have not been able to continue moving forward on.
I also think that it would be beneficial to have the facilities manager...
100%.
Be here, know the systems before we throw him into a building project. They'll be able to assist more if they understand the existing building before getting thrown into a project like that, so.
As someone who started midway through a $6.5 million project in January of 2015, I also agree that it is much easier if you can get to know the system. I don't want to do a big project, although Anna handled that project so beautifully, so. The other thing was that Becky and I were going to be starting to work on doing kind of a more in-depth staffing analysis. We know that this is still something that is needed. But with the, as Nimesh so adroitly named, the ADP debacle that has been, I think that that points it really well, unfortunately. They have not lived up to our expectations, and we've had to spend, expend a lot more energy on that. And so this is another thing that, while we agree is important, would like to shift it so that instead of starting it like we were planning to start it now, that we would start it in the next fiscal year, so like maybe this summer or earlier into the fall. I also want to point out that something that we added in with the strategic plan that wasn't going to be until next year was the Joffe security stuff, which I absolutely think was the right decision. And we've already been seeing tremendous value from Joffe and putting stuff together. We have the R and P almost ready to go. They're coming for their first onsite visit next week. So I think that that is a great example of how the strategic plan is not meant to be locked in stone. It is meant to be a living document that shifts as we have new needs that come up. And so all of the things in the plan are useful. All of them will help the library, and I think it goes to show that we need to take into account outside factors and make the best decisions we can with the information we have available. So those are some of the things, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions on any of this and to see if anyone has an issue with us shifting some of these timelines around my goals.
I think it makes a lot of sense to have the facilities manager on board. What we have with facilities planning.
My mother had a wonderful saying, was man plans and God laughs.
So... So much laughter, so much laughter.
Yes, exactly. So we have to chuckle together, and plans, they have to shift, so.
This is very true. I also put in there, I did it the report slightly differently than I did in November. It was more of a narrative report. What is the board's preference? Which report was easier and more digestible?
And you're talking about your goals check-in?
And the strategic plan.
Because they kind of overlap a lot.
They do, they do, as they should. Do you prefer more bullet points or more condensed like this? Was this easy to...
I'm a, it's just, I'm a bullet person. It's just easier to catch, but that's probably a personal preference. No, psychologically, people are, find it easier to read if things are in the shape of an F. So if you format your emails so that the, anyway, hit me up for more com sticks. Yeah.
I should write my emails as an F?
Yes.
Fascinating.
It's how your eyes scan for information. So bullet points would help the board read and retain more.
So go back to bullet points? Okay, great.
Definitely.
Thank you. That's really helpful. I appreciate the feedback. I like feedback.
This is feedback.
Thank you. I, I told Stacy, she needs to be more, tell me more when she's giving me feedback, so I'm very clear.
So now emails include things in all caps that say, "This is feedback," and then the feedback follows.
Okay. Anything else for Kate? Like questions, feedback? Tell her it's feedback before you give it.
It's helpful.
Okay.
I have one quick question. I've lost the overall...
Plan?
I've lost it in my head in terms of what it is that each quarter or each time is supposed to be.
I, I... You need like a high-level summary attached to all of these.
I think so. I, these are all in isolation now, and I don't...
This is great.
See them.
This is feedback, and I really appreciate it.
Okay. My pleasure. But it just feels like I don't have the scaffolding...
To attach it to.
Did we get the, is the strategic plan up on the website?
It is. Yes, I don't, I, I realize I don't have... Arielle's going to magic it up. I'm pretty sure it's just northbrook.info/strategic. I don't know if there's four, dash?
Dash.
Dash, plan. That was great typing under pressure. That's a really...
Yeah.
The keyboard sounds a side type also.
Oh, that was really good then, yeah. Thank you. I have it loading. So one fun thing that we've been experiencing lately with the website, this isn't a PDF, is that...
You still have to download it when you go there.
I know.
It's not working.
I know.
It worked.
It's not, it's, it's not ideal. There have been some malicious actors, I don't know if that's the right term, kind of like trying to crack into the website. I don't know what they think they're going to get. There's like nothing there that's not publicly available, but... So we have the high level, and Linda is working on putting together kind of more of a high level that'll tie in with the data dashboard, but we're just not quite there yet. So this is on the website, and... Yeah, and you can download it, and it is there. And I will, I think also, we talked about putting the one-pager kind of as the page, but we just have been, haven't gotten that off the touch, so. I think that would be probably the most useful thing for the scaffolding because it's just that high-level overview.
That would be great.
Yeah. So I will, I'm also trying to, in my report, tie in stuff, but I think maybe that might be diffusing it because stuff is maybe speaking to the overall strategic directions but might not be a direct result of an activity.
And also in conjunction with your goals.
Yes.
So it's like levels, strategic, your goals, and your reporting.
And my assumption is that with the next year, now that we have the strategic plan in place, which we didn't have when we were doing my goals last year, that those will just be the same, kind of, right?
I think so.
So.
Absolutely. Unless there's a need.
Right. So, yes, thank you for that great feedback, and I can make that better. I'm happy to answer any other questions on the strategic plan stuff or on my goals. Maybe we should add a section of just like emergencies. I could put so much there.
You'll give it more space.
That's true, that's true.
Okay, are we ready to move into closed session? Oh, I forgot that. There, we don't anticipate doing any business after closed session, so we are going to end the recording here and will adjourn upon our return to open session.